Welcome, everybody, to the December 13th, 2024 City Cheyenne City Council work agenda today with the municipal building spatial analysis. And Director Nemechek, you want to do introductions?
Vicky Nemechek, Public Works. I am going to ask our project manager, Ms. Adele Bartel, to do introductions and get this meeting started.
Okay, Adele, go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Adele Bartel, Public Works Staff Engineer and the Project Manager for this project.
Pull that microphone a little closer up to your mouth there.
Sorry. RT from GSG Architecture here is Crystal Klosterman, their Project Manager, and James Holloway, their Principal. And today, they will be presenting the major points and process of the, of their spatial analysis of the municipal building, and they will be taking questions at the end.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. As Adele said, I'm Crystal Klosterman, and we appreciate, oh, sorry. As Adele said, I'm Crystal Klosterman, and I was a project manager on this, and we appreciate all your guys' time and being here today for this. And this is...
Yeah, I'm James Holloway, Project Principal. So, we were asked as part of this work to examine your existing building, to look at programming analysis for now and moving into the future, and...
Yeah, one of the things we need are probably better sound system in here. So, you have to almost talk directly.
Was that good? I was trying to get the... Okay, all right. So, we were asked by the city to come up with a review of this facility, a review of all of departments, or a physical review of the facility to assess its general condition and also its capability to serve you, continue to serve the city in the future. And so, Crystal will go through our methodology and our findings with you, and we'll be open to discussion along the way. Thank you.
Yes, so, taking a look at the existing building, it was built in the late 1970s. The original layout idea for this building was an open office concept, so very limited rooms, mostly cubicles in their design. But over the years, through the growing departments and the growing needs of, and functions of each department, there has been several singular remodels, more reactionary remodels of the building, causing some inefficiencies in the current design. So, as James kind of said, we did spatial analysis, we looked at programming, and then we looked at which three options would be most viable for you guys moving into the future. So, whether that's reusing this existing building, an addition plus reusing this existing building, or in completely new building. In this process, we looked at the existing facility as it is. Again, we looked at the existing floor plans and compared them to the current layout of the building to see what has changed, what has moved, how have you guys grown? And then, we also did site visits and walked through each department detailing how they function, how they process, any inefficiencies we saw in that when we walked it, and opportunities as well in those, or things that were liked by each of the employees. And building on that, we interviewed, along with Adele, each of the department heads individually to get to know and understand how each of their department works singularly and as a whole amongst all the departments within the building, and how they function, and how those can all work together, as well as how they interact with the citizens in the community of Cheyenne. After we interviewed and did our initial analysis of the building, we found that, as you can see by the top graph, majority of the staff noted that they did like the existing building, and they did want to stay if it was feasible in the existing buildings. And with this, they noted that they liked the centralized location of the existing building, they liked the Civic Commons Park across the street, and they also liked having all the departments that are currently in the building, in the building, which improved their communication. And then, another thing that was noted is, which you can see by the second graph, is that currently, they have, and majority of the staff had enough space within their current departments for their current staff load, but it didn't leave opportunity for the growth of new staff in the next five to 10 years. And then, another big concern that was brought up among all the staff was security, which you can see by the lower graph. So, the big concern with this is there, if anyone walks in the building, they pretty much have access to the entire building. There's no, nothing stopping them from getting around the building. There's lack of wayfinding in the building, which has increased the security concern, because then they find citizens wandering the building, and they've noted several incidences with just homeless or other public causing security concerns within the building. And there's no way to lock down the building if there was a security concern, and there's no way to address noticing concerns coming into the building. They don't know until it's already here. And then, on top of that, we noticed there was some ADA compliance areas that could be addressed, and then there's a lack of daylighting from windows was another big concern. And then, the existing infrastructure, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure is outdated, and it's causing health risks and concern for the current staff.
There was significant, when we were interviewing people and department heads, there was significant concern with the HVAC system, seems to be an ongoing concern. A lot of that has to do with the sort of organic nature in which the facility has developed on the inside. In other words, as Crystal said, originally sort of planned as open offices, and then subdivided to support different elements working within the building, and the HVAC system remains largely unchanged. And so, there are certain areas of the building that are overserved and many that are underserved, and a lot of that has to do with the barriers that have been erected as the building has sort of grown and divided internally and organically over the years to address various departmental needs.
So, building on our investigation, what we learned from each department, we started digging into what were the programming needs each department needed, along with the whole building. And they, we also used the current, the five-year and the 10-year full-time employee expectations for the building when analyzing this, so looking at the number of rooms we need, the number of cubicles. And then, on top of that, from our interviews and from walking the space, we looked at added spaces needed within each department to improve efficiency of those departments. And one of the big items was conference rooms or lack of meeting space. None of the departments had their own personal conference room, and there was really only one functionable conference room to hold about eight to 10 staff members within the building. So, each department, if you walk them, they have a makeshift conference area in each room, but it lacks privacy and, for confidential information. And then, there are departments, such as the Human Resource Department, which lacks some office spaces where they can go in and have private, personal conversations that other people in the offices don't need to hear. So, we looked at addressing some of these concerns, as well as some areas had used furniture for makeshift spaces, so makeshift reception areas or meeting areas for public functions. So, that way, we can kind of build in a separation when we were going through this. And on the left-hand side, you can see the current square footage breakouts, and then on the right-hand side, the projected breakouts, and then on the far right, you'll see the FTEs, the current FTE, the five-year, and the 10-year FTE, and then the total of those. If you look on page 16 of the report, you can get a detailed list of that number and what positions each of those, those are for the current and future needs. And then, if you look on page 17, is a more detailed report of the diagram showed here on the actual breakdown of the rooms and divisions of each department themselves.
One of the other critical factors when we assess this, and Crystal will delve into this in more detail, is trying to make sure that we have the adjacencies properly accounted for, the departments that work with each other. We want to make sure that they're still able to collaborate with each other. We want to make sure that the level of public interaction is consistent. For example, not having a department that doesn't have a lot of public interaction on the first floor, when the first floor is ideal for public interaction. So, making sure that not only are we assessing the spatial requirements, but the connectivity and the working requirements either. And those are some of the specific questions that we asked each department head as we went through the process of determining this spatial needs analysis and programming study.
And then, building on what James says, we did move into looking at the departmental adjacencies. In our interviews, we did talk to them about what departments that they rely on regularly to work with, and other ones that are nice to be around, but they don't work with on a day-to-day basis. So, in the upper-right corner is the departmental adjacencies we put together based off this information, and you can see a better picture of it on page 14 of the report. And then, from there, we also looked at analyzing the current site, and how can the site better be utilized? So, in the lower graph is kind of looking at opportunities to provide a more regular-sized building, and what that could afford versus the shape of the current building. In addition, it's important to note that the Civic Center Park was originally a parking lot, and then you had the parking lot adjacent to the building that's currently used. So, this has led to some of the public confusion of the entrance of the building, because now you no longer have that Civic Center parking of the building, where I believe most of the public would park, and then you have the staff parking in the adjacent parking lot, and they have the staff entrance there. But now, this public is parking in the staff entrance, and then therefore trying to use the staff entrance to enter the building. And then, the monotone building itself with the sign isn't really addressing where the entry of the building is. So, looking at these adjacencies, we started looking at how to divide them up from more public to private as you move through the building. So, the first floor being your public spaces, and some of the, some of the departments do have some aspects that are public, but the other are more private. And then, the second floor is semi-public, semi-private, and then the third floor being completely private, so there's no public interactions with them. With that, you'll see also, in the detailed report, we looked at providing additional meeting rooms. So, that way, people on the second and the third floor can meet with the public on the first floor instead of having to bring them through the building. That way, you can restrict public interaction to the first floor and kind of secure the second and third floors.
So, one of the other elements that we looked at when we examine this, this set of criteria is, is the building itself. And so, as we began to look at the building, first of all, the building's in good shape. I mean, in terms of its physical condition, it's in good shape. Obviously, the HVAC systems that we talked about are in need of some repair and update to service the departments and the areas that have been cordoned off from generally being an open bullpen, which was the original design. But one of the other factors that really limits possibilities within this building is the actual structure of the building itself. So, this is a concrete, a reinforced concrete building with reinforced concrete floors that are constructed out of cast-in-place concrete joists and a concrete deck above. What that means in terms, once we step outside of the engineering realm, is that it's very inflexible. If there were large floor-to-floor areas, the floor-to-floor heights here are actually fairly confined as well, it means you have a very, very sturdy, but relatively inflexible structure. And so, that does come into consideration with some of the final recommendations that we made, trying to figure out how we can efficiently and economically alter this building as necessary to suit future needs, because some of renovation work within the building would be impractical because of the nature of the structure itself.
And one of the items would be upgrading the existing elevators to ADA, as you can see kind of on the, on the left-hand side. It's essentially a concrete core.
Right, and it is, it is a fundamental piece of the building structure. And so, while you could cut bigger holes in the floor to accommodate ADA elevators, it's going, that would be extraordinarily expensive for the benefit that you receive from that, and so, it's probably not the best alternative. And that does actually sort of lead us to our first recommendation, which would be the remodel of the existing space with a small addition. As we looked at the programming data that was becoming available to us and talked with all the folks in the building and their various departments, one of the things that we realized was that you were not out of space here. Generally speaking, the people that had or expressed concern about their space being too small, a lot of it had to do with it being poorly laid out and poorly organized, not because of those folks specifically, but because of the way these buildings and sort of ad hoc remodels had to react to existing spaces and other users of the building. And so, there's a lot of inefficiency in the building. I think we, as we look through this, we generally determine that to meet five- and 10-year FTE totals, that was still quite possible within this building with some realignment of the interior spaces. And so, we looked at this option, a small addition, which we'll talk about a little, and a remodel of the building, being in the neighborhood of $14.3 million to perform that work, and that would be a floor-through renovation, considering ADA, both general access and elevators, enhancing security, enhancing wayfinding, and enhancing the departmental synergies that you'd like to establish in a building like this.
As well as complete overhaul of the existing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructures, infrastructures to bring them up to date and keep the building safe for the occupants.
Absolutely, and we understand that there was actually a bathroom renovation project, which was bid but not, not constructed. We did take that into account in doing the new building as well, so that those bathroom core renovations are included in that cost, that $14.3 million that we quoted. So, as far as what would be necessary in the addition, it's actually fairly small. And one of the things that we're trying to do with this little addition is handle access and security areas. And so, with the building, as Crystal mentioned, you have a north parking lot, a north-facing parking lot, but your entry is on the west side of the building, the public entry. And so, that does actually create a fair amount of confusion for folks. The entry is actually tucked back pretty significantly off of the street frontage out there, making it even harder for folks to see. When you get into the building, there is sort of a security checkpoint up front, but it's fairly easy for people to enter the building and to get fairly deep into the building without being confronted. I was just using the restroom. Somebody walked in off the street to use the restroom right behind me. It's open to the public, and so, that does create some security challenges. So, our idea of a, you know, a minimalist addition that would address all of these things was basically a small addition on the north side of the building, facing the existing parking area. So, that reconfigures the security situation and gives far better wayfinding to folks as they approach the building. They get out of their cars, they see an entry, they see an obvious entrance to the building, an obvious public entry, and so, they're coming into a secured vestibule, essentially, being checked into the building. There's a small restroom there for their use while they wait, and then two ADA elevators, which could be constructed on the outside of the existing building very efficiently to hook up with the current building circulation system. And so, that would take care of that need. The existing internal elevators could continue in their function into such a time as that they were no longer functional, and then those areas could be infilled, the floors infilled if desired to, to create some additional space. But what this, what this solution does in a very economical fashion is to dramatically improve your security and check-in process, to orient the building back to the public parking area, and to allow for a significant amount of improvement in both security and wayfinding. One of the things that people thought was a good idea, and we've certainly seen this implemented before, was in that front lobby to have some sort of a kiosk there, which would identify the various departments, the various floors that they're on, and would make it easier for people, once they get past the secured area of the building, to find their way. Or, people, alternately, people from the various departments could come down and meet with these individuals in the public meeting rooms on the first floor in another controlled environment and not have to grant access to the public to some of the more sensitive areas of the building, and keep everyone safe and secure.
And if you wanted a closer-up image, Appendix G has the images, this addition plus the next images we're going to look at, which should be at the very back of your packet. One other thing to note with this addition is we added an area for the staff to entrance, as you can see on the upper portion of it. They can enter through there and not have to interact with the public and get straight into the building, as that was one of the things they wanted to be a little bit removed so they didn't have to have necessarily conversations if it didn't pose for them at the time. Looking at remodeling the building and the adjacency diagrams we looked at previously, we looked at laying these out on the floors. And the circular, circles are proportioned to the size of the departments based off the program analysis in there, and we laid them out, public versus private, as we discussed before. So, one big thing to notice on this is there is an outbuilding right off the parking lot, around 1,700 square feet, which posed a good opportunity for the facilities department. They recognized that the first floor was prime real estate for public departments, and their department wasn't necessarily public, but they did need to be on the first floor for that access, and they did express the need for a shop for some small equipment and tools to, to work in. And so, this building with a renovation poses a great opportunity to put that shop. They can make noise, they don't have to worry about disrupting the other spaces within the building. And then, moving from there, you see the entrance, the secured entrance, and looking at moving a lot of the public function spaces more towards that north side of the building. So, the lower portion would be where your chambers moved, which that would be one of the costlier things to move, and then you have your city council and your city council's meeting room. And then, also, you'll note there's a bunch of additional smaller meeting rooms and a larger meeting room to meet with the public there from departments on other floors. And then, looking at the center right now, where your current kind of entry is, looking at putting more private stuff on that side of those elevator cores, and utilizing those windows for break rooms, and closing in kind of where you currently have the sign and making an outdoor area for the public, and then you can also have the compliance over there. And then, again, moving more to the second floor, some of your more semi-public, semi-private departments, and again, you have break rooms, lounge rooms, and you have a public meeting space, as well as meeting spaces within the departments on this floor. And we kept planning and the building departments all together there since they function as well together. And then, moving to the third floors, your more private functions, you have your HR department, you have your attorneys, you have your mayor, and then you have kind of your, your IT department, which really doesn't need to be with the public and a computer lab. Again, you have break room, lounge space, and then you have a larger meeting room, along with meeting rooms within the departments. And then, it's important to note, HR, we put on the third floor because it's not public, but they do need quick access out the building with their, in the process of terminating or have a disgruntled employee. So, we put them close to a stairwell, that way they had quick access to exit somebody out of the building if needed, and they don't have to traverse through the entire building in order to do so. Our second recommendation was to look at a completely new building. This recommendation gives you a completely clean slate. It utilizes a more regular-sized-shaped building, and then we looked at zoning requirements and setbacks and everything to make sure that those are met, and then you are allotted three stories with this. It will give you greater flexibility. Again, you're looking at a complete, completely new everything, so your infrastructures, as well as more flexibility with programmatic layout, and there would be more square footage opportunity here if you wanted to look past the 10 years.
One of the other benefits of this, if you will, is also that this building can obviously, there's a couple of things that could happen to this building. One, it could continue in its existing purpose until the new building was constructed and complete, and therefore, nobody is out, nobody has to relocate. The relocation is a very simple, one-time process for everybody to move into the new building, after which point, you know, it would be up to the city's discretion how to dispose of this building, either as another municipal office building that could be leased out to other departments, as a potential lease variant for, you know, revenue generation to other entities, or that it simply comes down. One of the, one of the benefits, if it came down, would be obviously that now we are bringing parking back onto this lot again, and that the public entry to this building could then be moved, or to the new building could then be moved to the south, which is, and the parking on the south, which is way better in this climate for that. That way, you don't have to worry about ice and slipping falls and things like that to the degree that you might now be experiencing with parking on the north. Obviously, a three-story building's casting a long shadow in the winter, and so, you're going to have some parking icing conditions there. So, there are benefits and drawbacks to all of these recommendations, and, you know, we leave those for your consideration as well.
And in the report, it lists more detail, too, the advantages and disadvantages of each option. But this option, the construction cost is around $39 million. So, as you can see from this image, you could get an 87,000-square-foot building at three stories tall, and the existing building is 57,000 square feet. So, you can get a substantial more square footage with this option. I just wanted to thank you again for all your guys' time, and we're open to any questions or discussion items you guys wanted to talk about.
Dr. Aldrich.
I have a list. So, thank you so much for that presentation, and I did read the first document you guys had provided to us last fall. So, I found it interesting that there was a request by employees for more security, but also for more windows, which seems dichotomous, but I also was concerned about if we remodeled this building, it seems to me that the mechanical system... system replacement, which you mentioned in the first report that I read, and I didn't get through this one in time to see if it was in this one as well, that that could run into a lot of construction overruns. Because, I don't know, was that calculated into the 14 million?
So, a complete overhaul, a brand-new mechanical, electrical, and plumbing system was priced into the existing.
Into the existing, okay. Also, I, as, as I have been visiting with different departments over the last couple of years, one of the things I heard commonly was that sometimes the changes that are being made to this existing building are kind of random. Like, sometimes, one department or a group will come in and say, "This is what we want done. The facilities guys, just get it done. The paint doesn't get wet." And then, it, then, the reconfiguration changes, the new people come in, and before the paint's dry, it's, "Let's rip out that wall that they had just installed." So, I, I don't know that, quite honestly, that we've ever, I don't know if there's ever really been a plan for remodeling, or who approves that, or who's really supervising this, or is it just like, every department head, you know, it's the wild, wild west, and everybody does their own thing? Because it doesn't seem like there's a lot of coordination historically, which probably speaks to the open space versus now, some issues with the mechanical systems functioning as they should have. How many, do you know how many employees we had in the 1970s, when the building was originally built?
I do not know that number.
Does anybody know that? And I, my understanding is now that we have about 550? Is that, I don't know how many are in this building, though. Do we know how many are actually working in this building?
I believe there's approximately 100 people working in the building, but I, I can't say that absolutely, but I believe it's about 100.
I did, I thought that moving the IT from the first floor to the third floor was actually a really good idea. And moving building permits down to where they would be more accessible, I thought was helpful as well. I did find it interesting that the mayor's office would still remain on the third floor, because I would think that that would have more traffic than maybe some of the other offices on the third floor. But if they're able to utilize the meeting rooms on the first floor, that makes sense. I also noticed that the maintenance to storage, moving the maintenance to the storage building, first and foremost, I, that seems a little weird, because it looks like a garage right now, but it is, I don't see a restroom on that plan at all.
That building would be remodeled.
Even on, okay.
That's part of the number, yeah.
Okay. And that was my next question, was that included in the...
You'd have to look at putting one in there, that's correct.
Okay. I also was a little concerned about the, there's a bush out back. Catheters, we're going to get catheters. Is there, I was concerned about the north entry, especially in our climate, because north entries are not ideal for most, especially commercial spaces.
Agreed. You know, that's an unavoidable thing. Right now, you have people basically entering in the north. They're walking right by this to get into the building. And while the west entry may be a little easier to keep clear, you are essentially still inviting people to walk through the parking lot and down the sidewalk to get there. And so, what this essentially does is shorten the path a little bit to get into that. But absolutely 100%, a north entry is not ideal.
I also wondered, when you talked about leasing this existing building, if we were to build a new building, I don't see that we would be able to do that, actually, without doing ADA renovations to this building. I don't think we'd be able to lease it without some legal issues.
Yeah, there, I think some of that stuff would need to be addressed, for sure.
So there, that would be an additional, at an additional cost.
It would be, but a lot of times, especially if there was a willing client, a lot of those things would fall under tenant improvements, which would be borne by the new tenant.
And I also wondered, what about if a new building were to be built? It looks like it would be slab rather than a basement structure?
I think that would be up to the, up to the design. Right now, we're just looking at functional stories. We can certainly have a basement in the building, if that's a desirable thing. If that's where all the mechanical equipment is, that would work fine. That would be a matter of a more refined design effort.
I was just thinking that basement is usually your cheapest mechanical space and storage space.
Actually, basements are very, very expensive, when you think about it. They're super expensive, because we're doing all the excavation, pouring all the concrete, et cetera. In terms of finished spaces, they're less expensive, obviously, if they're only utilitarian.
Okay. Well, those were my questions and comments. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. In, in terms of security, if I could just step back, you know, so the dichotomy between more windows and more security, I think that on the, on the public floors, where, on the second floor and third floor, the, the more non-public you get, the more opportunities there are for windows. And I think that that's fairly, looking at the building, the floor plate is what is really inflexible. I think adding windows to the upper floors would be relatively easy, I would say, to do that, to try to accommodate that. And we could use that opportunity, I think, in how those offices would be laid out to borrow light towards the interior of the building, too, even as deep as the corridors in the central core of the building.
Your mic's off.
Just one more thing, I wanted to make a suggestion, that when I'm looking at the proposed plan, if, for a remodel, that it looks like it would, it would be beneficial to exchange where you have city council listed with the committee room, so that people are not going as deep into the building as what would normally be if those two were flipped. So, my suggestion.
Yeah.
Councilman Seigrafe.
Thank you. I'm very pleased that you agree with me that there's a lot of wasted space here. I mean, you walk through this place, and it's, it's just poorly utilized. I've worked in buildings that are millions of square feet, and now I work in 1,400 square feet. And this building is, is just poorly utilized. Years ago, all of the council functions were right here, and we used one room for our purposes and for committee hearings. Now we have two large rooms that are rarely used. I mean, we have a committee for an hour on Mondays and an hour on Tuesdays, and we have little desks in a room that we hardly ever sit at. I mean, we've got probably, I don't know how big that is down there, 2,000 or 3,000 square feet, 2,000 square feet? That's, that's occupied by one person most of the time. I mean, it's just a total waste. So, and when you walk through departments, and I'm not going to pick on anyone today, but you walk down the middle of it, and it's just unbelievably wide open with, with little usage. Quick question. When you analyzed this, did you analyze departments that could be removed from this building? Are there, are there functions that could be, we have a second story of a, of another building three blocks away, that's unfinished, that...
We didn't look at removing any of the departments, because there was a pretty big consensus that they loved having all the departments here within the building, and it helped their efficiency and their everyday work. So we didn't look at removing them. And we didn't know there was another second story, though.
Yeah, the, the other open space over there was, was not part of our discussions.
I mean, because you're looking at a five-year and a 10-year plan, but if you utilize this other space that we already own, that's, that's totally empty. You could do a 20-year plan here, pretty easily, I would think.
Yeah, that's conceivable.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Mr. President.
Dr. Rini.
I was interested in knowing if you had a projected timeline, if we had the money to start this immediately, and we elected to do the remodel instead of new construction, one, how long would that take? And I presume it would have to be phased, so not everybody would have to be moved out of the building?
Right. Actually, what you were just discussing in terms of open space, that's actually a really good opportunity to use as a swing space while things are going on here. And I would imagine that there were some things that needed to be addressed overall. Others could be handled basically by floor. A lot of that is really the value of the programming study, to figure out how we can move people around, that sort of chess game that we would need to play in order to keep people working in this building and not really affect operations. Also, you know, we, we would want to minimize the number of moves that any one group would make. I don't think we want to displace one group three times. And so, all of that has to be sort of organized and played out in that, yes. It is a phased process. I would think design is kind of a holistic, you know, one-time process. We do have a timeline laid, that crystal's laid out.
So you would be looking at three to four months for the design solicitation, to get an architect or a designer on board. And then you'd be looking at around 12 months for the design process, and then you would be looking at 16 to 24 months for construction.
Depending on the phasing, exactly.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Labour.
Thank you. I particularly like your diagrams. They're a lot better than text, and you can really begin to understand the general layout better. But my question is, has to do with the windows. So we have these narrow, full-length windows. So I assume that when you're talking about these departments, you're talking about a bigger, wider window. Is that right?
Yeah, structurally, we can, we can add windows to the exterior of the building in various locations. I think, you know, we would want to be careful about the existing aesthetic and not disrupting that and making it look like, you know, two different buildings sort of glom together. But, yeah, windows are not that hard to do. We can put them in, we can augment, you know, the sort of narrow slit by putting in, you know, many narrow windows. We could go for wider windows. A lot of that would be, you know, the aesthetic considerations and looking at what you folks thought of that as we move through that process.
So, there aren't structural considerations like this?
There are, there are.
So you, you can't just make that cut and put a big window in? You have to be careful as to the existing situation.
We do have to be careful. It depends a lot on what is above us. You know, as you move up the building, there's less and less weight that is bearing above that needs to be carried. Typically, in masonry buildings, you'll see, you'll see narrower windows, because the masonry is very heavy. So putting in a 20-foot-long window is more of an engineering and design challenge. All doable, it just depends on the amount of effort and cost that you are willing to go for, to, to make that happen.
And so, we have a general idea here that we need more light. And so, the figures that you presented, do they have a window component here, so that we're, can be clear that we're going to do more, and hopefully have it be compatible with this certain design? Yet, really, I think assure the people that work here that they're not going to be in these closed, very, they're just not optimum space. So, that figure is included here?
Yes, we included at least doubling, if not more, the size of the current windows that are installed in this building to provide these more open lit spaces.
And for everybody, as we went through, I mean, that was a constant, pretty much across all departments and all considerations, is that people, people like this location, they like the centrality of the location, they, they very much enjoyed having their compatible departments next to them with easy access to them. But pretty universally across the board, one of the concerns was a lack of natural light. And so, as we worked through this with our cost estimator, and while we didn't come up with a design, per se, just kind of these diagrammatic concepts, that was something that was featured heavily in the response from your folks and heavily into the cost estimate as it developed.
And so, since, when this building was built, the adjacent civic center was built as well. And that relationship exists today, and I assume will exist in the future, with access similar to what we have now. Is that right?
Yeah, that corridor, or the stair corridor would still remain, most likely. And that's the current only access point, where they're officially connected.
Well, I, I, I know we're going to have to deal with the civic center someday as well, but, thank you.
Dr. Rini.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now that you've delivered this, what is our next step? I mean, assuming we want to proceed?
So, the next step in this process, I think, would be a solicitation for an architect and a design team, depending on which way you went, whether that would be for the renovation or new construction. My assumption would be the renovation of this building. But I think that would be your next step.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Probably at our first goal city, start discussing that. Dr. Aldrich.
President Escobal, through, I just wanted to ask, you know, I believe, if I remember the numbers correctly, you said that a new building would increase the square footage by about 30,000 square feet.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering if, like we've done in the municipal court, if initially, in a new building design, the first two floors could be finished with the third floor left unfinished, to reduce some of that cost.
Absolutely. And it's, that's a pretty good plan for, for this. We've done numerous projects, a lot at the University of Wyoming, fairly large-scale projects, are very large-scale. And a lot of times, that's exactly the way they proceed, because the way, you know, the way the market works is, building today is going to be cheaper than building tomorrow, and planning for that, even if that is a, an unused space for five years, the money, essentially, that you would save by doing it now versus the money that you would put into it doing it later, that can be substantial.
One follow-up question, have, I, I'm just thinking that with our climate here and the security issues, was there any consideration in thinking about, especially in a new building design, underground parking that would be for employee parking, and then that would minimize our footprint above ground for public parking?
So, that's a two-part answer on that one. One, that's, that is very expensive parking, okay? It is, it would be highly desirable parking, no doubt, especially considering the weather and things like that. Underground parking presents a security risk, because of the fact that people could drive a vehicle into that with, and we've seen this unfortunately before, with an explosive device. And so that puts the entire building at jeopardy. And if you look at the way federal buildings are designed, courthouse buildings are designed, nobody does that anymore. It was common, obviously, the first, you know, World Trade Center attack, that's what it was. It was an attack on the parking structure underneath the building. And so that is a, that's a fairly major security concern in terms of public access building, especially governmental buildings.
I was, President Escobal, I was just thinking that it works fairly well for us in the Capitol complex currently, and it would give us an opportunity to secure our city vehicles.
Sure.
Through a keyed access.
It, it does, it does here and now, and that is exactly what is available there. And so I think to shut it down, you know, obviously, that would present a lot of problems at the Capitol, but in a, in a new design, that's a, definitely a consideration that you want to take into account.
Yes, my follow-up with that one would be, on the security side, do a lot of municipal buildings in cities our size have manned metal detectors that you come through when you enter the buildings?
So, magnetometers are common in courthouses, okay? And almost, there, there's a lot of municipal buildings that don't have them. A lot of people feel, just, you know, city councils, et cetera, feel like that is an undue burden on the public to pass through something like that, and it limits the access. And, you know, your elected officials, you want your constituents to feel comfortable in the building, you want them to have access to you. So, it's, it's most common in courthouses, both federal and the, the other jurisdictions of court. Less common in municipal buildings, but it is becoming more common. It is becoming more common. And a, and absolute check-in procedure is now pretty much standard, where you, you check into the building through this very well-defined... where you, you check into the building through this very well-defined path. You are never unescorted, you know, until you, until you know exactly where you're going and you've passed through more of a security protocol. We're doing a renovation right now at the Wyoming Law Enforcement Academy, just in Douglas. You can walk right into that building, it's crazy. And that was the way it was originally designed. The office is 20 yards into the building before you report into the office. Otherwise, you walk in and you have immediate access to the whole building. And that's the law enforcement academy. And so we are helping them with that, and we are putting in a much more secure entry. But there are no magnetometers there.
Okay, Councilman White.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. And, and thank you to our consultants for this study. I know my colleagues and I have been waiting a long time for these recommendations. I agree with Mr. Seigraev on the, just the poorly utilized space in our current building. It's, 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 I think it's kind of ridiculous. But my question for the consultants is based off page nine on the appendix under electrical systems. And I haven't had a chance to get too far in the weeds, but I was just wondering if in any of your current projects or past projects, has solar ever been with regard to electrical systems? Has solar ever been utilized in any of, any of your analyses or, or other projects?
Yes, we, we frequently do that. That is something that's becoming more and more of a mainstream option, I think. And it certainly would be an option here as well, depending on how much roof space that we have available in this building or in a, in a new structure. So it's absolutely an option. There are other components of that that are a little more complicated. For example, you know, battery storage is a whole different kind of component. That is actually becoming far more mainstream now with the way that the battery technology has developed as well.
Thank you, thank you for that answer. I'm, I'd be curious to see if, if that is an option that could be utilized on any type of remodel renovation, just as a cost savings.
Yeah, I, there are, there are obviously upfront costs associated with that. But, you know, there is a return on investment over a number of years, depending on the size of the array that's, that's utilized.
No further questions?
Councilman Seigraev.
One final question. When you were talking about the north-facing entry, it just got me thinking about the east side of our building with the parking structure there that we own. Did we look at, at making the main entry? I'm, I'm not sure there's enough room, but is, did you look at making that the main entry at all and having the public use the parking structure?
That, that would be an option. We didn't look at that one because it would be hidden kind of on the backside of the building. And then you'd have to kind of direct until the public learns to start parking there versus the current parking lot.
But wouldn't that eliminate the concerns for, for the weather? And you could actually do your addition out into the plaza out there?
Yeah, there is definitely room for an addition out to the plaza, for sure. That would be a possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich?
President Escobal, through you, I'm just curious, with the zoning that we're currently, this building is currently sitting in and all of our new UDC codes around parking, are we really obligated to provide any parking?
So with a, with a very small-scale addition, you know, I think the parking, if you, if the, you know, the UDC is, is for the central core, right, that's the issue where the parking tends to go away. I would think that while it might not be required under UDC, I would think that as a public building, it would be important to have adjacent parking, especially with the amount of public traffic that you get in and out of the building.
Did we look at all that expansion of the parking structure that we have on the east side here and direct access into this building?
That was not really a consideration, no.
Councilman Labor? No, nothing? Any final comments or final questions? Director, do you have anything?
I'd just like to say thank you for your attention and your great questions. There's lots of them there and comments, and we appreciate it. This is a, this is a difficult subject, and we really want to do the right thing and move forward as best we can. So we look forward to hearing from you, what your ideas on how we, how we do that. Thank you.
Well, thanks again for being here and for everybody else in attendance, and we'll keep the conversation going. Seeing no further questions, we are adjourned.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, thank you.